Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, May 15, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board Business Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This evening, we ask our Board, staff, and community to join us in a moment of silence in memory of Mary Jo Katona, Instructional Aid at Colonial Middle School. Mary Jo began her service with the Colonial School District on March 15, 2001, and for over two decades, she dedicated herself to supporting students and staff with compassion, kindness, and unwavering commitment. Her presence will be deeply missed by the Colonial Middle School community, as well as the entire school district, and all who had the privilege of working with her. We extend our heartfelt condolences to Mary Jo's family, friends, and colleagues during this difficult time. Please join us now in a moment of silence to honor her memory. Thank you.
The Board met an executive session tonight to review the Personnel Report, Special Education Agreements, and the Annual Safety and Security Report. Several labor-related topics were also discussed. In addition, the Board was made aware of a real estate tax exoneration request. The meeting lasted approximately one hour. And now, I will turn it over to Dr. Gregitis.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruno. Tonight, we are very proud to recognize Jim Muscarella, engineering teacher at Plymouth Whitmarsh High School. Mr. Muscarella was recently presented with the Citadel Heart of Learning Award. Would you like to stand up, Mr. Muscarella? The Citadel Heart of Learning Award is given out annually by Citadel Credit Union to outstanding teachers who are nominated in Bucks, Chester, Delaware, Montgomery, Lancaster, and Philadelphia Counties. Citadel noted that Mr. Muscarella was chosen for his ability to engage and challenge students through authentic learning experiences. The STEM (Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics), and EDI (Entrepreneurship, Design, and Innovation) programs he has developed, along with his mentorship and the inclusive environment he fosters, enable all of his students to thrive. Several parents who submitted nomination forms noted that his support for students has made an impact. One parent nominator said, "He has been a very positive influence for my daughter and an advocate of women in engineering." Another nominator cited his ability to foster trust and lasting relationships with students as a reason for him to win the award. "He has formed meaningful connections with my daughter and her classmates, creating a safe environment where students can learn, collaborate, and explore their passions." "We are incredibly grateful to have Mr. Muscarella as a teacher, mentor, and sponsor within our community, as well as an advocate of women in engineering," said another parent. Mr. Muscarella started his career at Colonial in 1995 as a long-term substitute at the middle school, and a year later, he became a science teacher there. In 2001, he moved over to the high school where he teaches engineering. He was part of an exclusive pilot program to establish a national standardized high school engineering course through an initiative called Engineering for Us All. He has also served as advisor for students involved in the Robotics Club and is currently sponsoring -- I'm sorry, is currently a sponsor for the Science Olympiad Club at Plymouth Whitmarsh. He is also known for organizing an annual cardboard boat race in the high school pool. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in chemical engineering and a Master of Science degree from Drexel University. Mr. Muscarella is the third Colonial School District teacher within the last three years to receive a Citadel Heart of Learning Award. We are so proud to have so many outstanding educators like Mr. Muscarella in our schools. Congratulations, Jim. I'd like to say a few words.
Am I coming inside? Am I going outside?
And at this time, I would like to welcome to the podium Beth Rickard, who has some exciting news to share about our PW Boys tennis team, as well as our DECA team.
Good evening, Board members and administrators and our guests. My name is Beth Rickard, and I'm a teacher at PW, and I've also had the honor to serve as the Boys Tennis Head Coach for the past two years. This year has been a very exciting year for our Boys Tennis Program. We fought valiantly for the league title, but unfortunately fell short, but we still had so many successes on the court. So this evening, I'd like to recognize some of our men who helped contribute to such a successful season and recognize their accomplishments. I'd like to start with Sam Chapman, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening as he had work, and his doubles partner, Colm Dockerty. Colm and Sam were our first doubles team this year. They persevered against incredible opponents and fought valiantly, so much so that they were recognized by all of the coaches throughout our SOL League and nominated to be on the doubles' second team for the SOL League. Colm and Sam are both seniors and will both be leaving us, as Sam travels to Grove City for his college career, and Colm travels to the University of South Carolina to study engineering. Congratulations to both Sam and Colm. I'd also like to recognize Nam Zhao and Matt Falatex. Matt is a freshman at PW, and Nam is a sophomore. So this year, the two joined forces as our second doubles team, fought again through many challenging matches, and were quite successful, again earning recognition from the other coaches in our league and being placed on the second doubles team for the SOL League. Congratulations to both Matt and Nam. I have two more gentlemen that I would like to recognize from the team, both individually and as a pair. First, I'd like to recognize James Fassbender. James is our senior, and he will be graduating this year. He has been a strong force on our team for the past four years. James qualified for singles for each of the four years. He was on the team for our district tournament, and he has, by leaps and bounds, showed incredible leadership for us this year. He and Colm both served as our captains, and they did a phenomenal job. The other gentleman I'd like to recognize is Janay Chef, who is a sophomore on our team. Janay won our SOL Singles League this year and went to districts, along with James, both for singles, where they both persevered to the second round, which is incredibly difficult. That is a feat in and of itself. I would also like to recognize them as a pair, because they played doubles together this year, as well as last year. They won our SOL Tournament last year. They won our SOL Tournament this year. Through their amazing accomplishments, they were given the sixth seed in our district tournament, where they made it through their first round of play, beating a doubles team from Strathhaven and another doubles team from Council Rock North, before they fell in an incredible match against the Conestoga Team, where they also had an opportunity to play the next day and played an almost three-hours doubles match against the Unionville Team. So congratulations to both Janay and James. They have had an incredible season, along with the rest of our PW Tennis Team.
And Ms. Rickard, I think you have some more exciting news to share with us?
I do, in fact. For the last nine years, I've been the DECA advisor as well, and I have to tell you, PW DECA, we rock this year. PW DECA won the PA DECA Cup for our chapter, which is only given out to one chapter in all of Pennsylvania. We were recognized for our community service and for the community giving that we have done throughout. We were also recognized on a national level for our community service, our fundraising, and our promotional campaigns. PW DECA has a national reputation, and our students are the ones who do it all. So with that being said, I'd like to recognize the students that are here this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and call them out for a moment. So first recognition goes to Zach Halbert. Zach is a junior, and he is also an officer, who is one of those students who is responsible for us securing those campaigns this year. Zach was a finalist, which means he was in the top 10 of about 130 students in his event of business finance at our state conference this year. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Jonah Reed. Jonah is a senior who will be attending college at the University of Florida, where he'll be studying marketing. This year, Jonah competed in food marketing as his event. What that entailed meant that Jonah took a 100-question test that was multiple-choice about marketing and food marketing specifically. After that, he then had to compete in two separate role plays, where he had 10 minutes to prepare and then 10 minutes to prepare for the judge for each of the role plays that he did. Jonah was a top seven finisher, which qualified him for our international competition in Orlando, Florida this year. Congratulations to Jonah. Jonah is also on our officer team and part of our campaigns that got us our national Next, I would like to recognize three students who were a team. That would be Ethan Gold, Logan Nye, and Jason Walters. Ethan, Logan, and Jason embarked on a project this year, and a project may initially sound easier, but I assure you, it is not. The project that these students choose to work on was called Business Solutions. They had to work with an actual organization to identify a problem that they had, come up with a solution for that organization, and then implement that solution, and then reflect upon their results if they actually solved the problem. This year, those students chose to work with the PW School Store, and the problem that they worked to tackle was the inaccessibility of being able to purchase beyond our bonus block, period. The boys worked very hard to build a website where parents and community members could order apparel and merchandise, and they also secured a new vendor that would bring different products to the store. It was a fantastic experience for them, and they placed top seven, qualifying them for our International Career Conference. And last, but definitely not least, I have another team of ladies that I would like to recognize, Eliza Miersman and Addison Stein. Unfortunately, Addison could not be here this evening because she is on our lacrosse field playing against Shanahan. But I will absolutely tell you a little bit about their project, because they also chose to work in project management. They took a different slant and wanted to work on community giving. So the organization that they chose to work with was a dog rescue, and as you can imagine, the rescue needed funds. These ladies stepped up and organized a bingo fundraiser that was held at PW in December. Through their efforts, they got over $2,000 worth of community prizes donated, and they sold over $5,000 in tickets and raffle prizes to the community to raise money for this organization. This is not an easy feat. These ladies are, one is a sophomore, one is a junior. They did this on their own, and they did a phenomenal job. So phenomenal, in fact, that when they presented their project at State's, they were the first-place finishers for their event, qualifying them for our International Career Conference. Congratulations to Addie and Eliza.
Congratulations to all of our students that were just honored, and thank you, Ms. Rickard, for leading all of our students down this path. We do understand if all of our families and students want to go home and get a good night's rest, but you're more than welcome to stay.
All right. This is a motion to approve minutes as presented in Items 4B through 4F. May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in Items 5B through 5M for April 2025. May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the April 2025 Treasurer's Report. May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, it is time for public comment. Is there any public comment this evening on any items that are on our agenda? All right. Seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Gregitis for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruno. This is a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Extracurricular Contracts as outlined in 8B and 8C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, I will turn it over to our student representatives. Good evening.
Okay. So first, for Plymouth Whitmarsh, PW concluded its Keystone testing this week after four days of hard work by its students. The school commends everyone who participated. PW students are in the heat of AP testing, with all Set One exams concluding tomorrow. Tests mark an end of the school year for most AP classes, so please congratulate any AP students you know for blazing through the year. Finally, the Colonial players announced their productions for next year. Clue, a play adaptation of the original board game, will be performed in fall 2025. Something Rotten, a musical about two brothers competing with William Shakespeare to write a play, will be performed in spring 2026.
At Contra Hockin Elementary, to conclude our One Book, One School journey this year through the children's book Ladybug Launch, we have two special activities coming up. On May 1, students have the experience of going into space with a mobile planetarium. Then, during the week of May 12, each classroom will receive their very own ladybug farm to watch grow. May 16 is the CE 3rd Grade Concert, which will also showcase the Coyote Handbells. May 21 is the Special Olympics. CE is looking forward to cheering our students from Mrs. Levin's class onto success. CE's 2nd and 3rd Grade Sports Club continue during the month of May. This after-school activity has been a huge hit with our students. On Mondays in May, CE is hosting a free after-school nature club that is for 2nd grade. This club is run by Riverbend Environmental Center and sponsored by ASTM. Then, on May 27, the 2nd grade will go to Saunders Woods, which is also funded by ASTM. In May, CE will again reopen their plot at the Contra Hockin Community Garden. Students will weed the plot and plant vegetables and flowers that will be tended by families over the summer, with donations of produce going to the Colonial Neighborhood Council.
Courage Park, to honor Autism Acceptance Month, students engage in a variety of activities focused on acceptance and differences, including morning meeting activities and class buddy activities. Students participated in a sensory walk, which was a huge success. Many thanks to our team for creating this experience for our learners. Ms. O did a fabulous job on the evening of May 6, leading the 3rd grade concert at CES. Throughout the week of May 5, we honored staff for Staff Appreciation Week with lots of treats.
Moving on to Colonial Elementary School, CES held their Advanced Spring Concert on April 9. 3rd Grade Family Orientation Night will be held on May 20. All 5th Grade students will visit CMS the week of May 19. CES is continuing their One School, One Book experience. This year's novel is The Hero Two Doors Down by Sharon Robinson. A number of students from CES will be competing in the Special Olympics at Haprow-Horsham High School on May 21.
For Colonial Middle School, CMS has seen great success with its clubs this past month. 55 students received Latin awards and were honored by the Philadelphia Classical Society and National Latin Exam. CMS TSA also had 20 students earn top-10 finishes, including many top-three honors. CMS Best Buddies participated in the Best Buddies Walk in King of Prussia on April 27 and raised $1,085 for Best Buddies in an effort to support inclusion initiatives. More recently, the 6th grade musical, The Addams Family, was a tremendous success on May 2 and 3. Staff and students put on three phenomenal shows with just six weeks of preparation. Congratulations to everyone involved. 5th Grade Move-Up is coming up, and we are excited to welcome our 5th Grade students to school for a tour and orientation next week. We are also holding our annual 5th Grade Parent Move-Up Night on May 21. The CMS Art Show is set to take place on Friday, May 16, at 6:30. We are looking forward to celebrating all of our talented students. 8th Graders recently had a surprise. On May 2, immediately following the science PSSAs, all 8th Graders attended an assembly in the auditorium. Ms. Spivvy and Dr. Kaplan shared with 8th Graders that we had been selected to participate in the first-ever history PSSA. Students were quickly surprised that this was just a ruse, and we spent the rest of the afternoon playing yard games, enjoying some time with friends, and eating ice cream for Mr. Softy's ice cream truck. This was a very enjoyable afternoon and the start of a new tradition here at CMS.
At Plymouth Elementary, we closed our spring book fair after a well-attended family night on May 7. Also, on May 7, we welcomed over 350 people for our kindergarten carnival. The 3rd Grader's Final Concert, Countdown to Summer, was held on Wednesday, May 14, at CES. On May 31, the 3rd Graders will be performing the National Anthem at the Phillies Game, and Mrs. Udovitch will be throwing out the first pitch. We are so excited. On Monday, May 19, we will hold our annual Color Run, where students will run/walk to raise money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Families are invited to walk or run with their students, so it's a fun community event that we look forward to each year. On Thursday, May 22, we celebrate a year of hard work, growth, and accomplishments at our Achievement Day event. This fun-filled day is a chance for students to showcase their successes with their families. From academic milestones to personal growth, every student has something to be proud of, and we can't wait to celebrate together.
Lastly, for Whitmarsh Elementary, on Wednesday, May 7, the Whitmarsh School community kicked off One Book, One School. This year's book is The World According to Humphrey. Teachers switched classes and read Chapter 1. The students loved seeing some of their previous teachers and also meeting new teachers. Students and families will have the opportunity to participate in various activities related to the book over the next few weeks. Whitmarsh Elementary hosted its annual spring kindergarten orientation on Thursday, May 8. Families of registered incoming kindergarten students were invited to join us to learn about our school and take a tour. Students and their families used a bingo board to find different locations throughout the building. Over 70 families participated in this event. The 3rd Grade students performed their 3rd Grade Concert, The Hero in Us, for their families at Colonial Elementary School on Wednesday, May 7. The students and Ms. Langis did an amazing job preparing for the concert.
Thank you very much for your reports. We do, at this time, have two other PW students that are student representatives to the Board that we would like to thank very much for a great job that they did serving as our student representatives all year. I would like to invite up Natalie Dick and Ronnie Keane. Would you like to come up and share a little bit about your futures?
Hi, you guys all know me. I'm Ronnie. I first heard about the opportunity to be on the Board two years ago when I was a sophomore, and I said, "You know what? Why not?" You know? I remember one of our very first meetings here, I was a junior, and it was concerning Dr. Clay's resignation, and that was definitely baptism by fire. That first meeting, or probably third, was just crazy, but you know what? I loved being able to hear the voices of people in our community and being able to see how things function at the very top of the district, so I said, "You know, I'm here for the ride." You know, the Board has been, or the Board experience has been a great way to just kind of see what's going on around the district. I had no idea that so many initiatives are constantly in play, especially in the elementary schools, so it's been great to hear about everything going on around me. Next year, I will be attending the University of Chicago for Public Policy, so I'm excited to embark on a new journey, and hopefully, I've left you all with someone to remember, a face to remember, and just know, in the future, if you ever need anything, you can always call Ronnie Keane to help out.
Hi. I shouldn't have let him go first, because he's really hard to follow. I'm Natalie. As you know, I've had such a great time being on this board, sitting at these chairs, and really, as Ronnie said, watching the inner workings of the district. You really have no idea, all the intricacies. You read what's up on that screen, and you realize how much is always going on, and I want to thank all you guys for all that you do for our district, and thank you for the experience that you've given me. It's been a pleasure being at these meetings, helping the younger students come up, and then they'll help the students after that, so we just continue this chain. It's been great to build this network, so thank you. Okay. I'm going to Boston University next year, and I will be studying neurobiology, potentially
Congratulations to you both, and we do have a little something special to help you get acclimated into your futures next year. Thank you again.
All right. Rick?
Section 404 of the Public School Code directs the Colonial School Board of Directors shall appoint during the month of May, sorry, shall during the month of May, elect a treasurer for a term of one year beginning on the 1st of July following such election. Motion to appoint Mark Digian for the position of treasurer.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Good job. Congratulations, Mark. Sharon?
This is a motion to approve Beth Petruno as the Colonial School District's Voting Delegate for the 2025 PSBA Delegate Assembly and Meeting.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Board Policy 828, fraud. This is a new policy and categorized as illegal liability. Policy 823, lock zone. This policy has a new number and has been rewarded to include PSBA recommended language definitions and guidelines. Policy is categorized as illegal liability.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you.
This is a motion to approve the board policies outlined below on a first-read basis. Policy number 320, freedom of speech by employee. This is a new policy with an updated title. PSBA has categorized this policy as a recommendation. And Policy number 342, jury duty. This is a new policy and is categorized as illegal liability by PSBA.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick.
It's a motion to accept $4,756,794.29 property tax relief as provided by Special Session Act 1 of 2006 and to further establish the 2024 exclusion of $17,703 from each eligible homestead and farmstead assessment within the Colonial School District to produce a maximum tax reduction amount of $469.04.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the Colonial School District Real Estate Tax Installment Payment Plan Resolution that is an option for all taxpayers.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the Central Monco Technical High School's operating budget for the 25-26 school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the attached list of banking and investment institutions for the 25-26 fiscal year.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Last one, Rick.
It's a motion to approve the administration's recommendation of a four-year contract with Elite Revenue Solutions to serve as the district's tax collector for Plymouth and Whitmarsh Townships beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029, as outlined below.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the educational services for the 2025-26 school year as outlined below. Speech Pathology Consultants Incorporated, speech services at $88 per hour and $100 per hour for home-based services. George Crowther's Memorial School, ESY Educational Services for two students in the amount of $16,717.68. ESY, one-to-one services for two students in the amount of $9,626.40. ESY Intensive Support for Supplement for two students in the amount of $2,839.68. Lynda Mahmood Bell Learning Processes, one-to-one sensory cognitive instruction sessions at $169 per session for an amount not to exceed $9,971 for one student from June 9th, 2025 to August 9th, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the educational services outlined below for the 2024-25 school year. Vanguard School, one-to-one services for one student in the amount of $50,000.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the services agreement renewal for the Lincoln Center to provide three community counselors, one at CMS and two at PW High School, for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $255,000.
May I have a second, please? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the subcontract for the access program for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the contract with MCIU to provide VHS program services for the 25-26 school year.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Motion to approve force settlement and release agreements. Due to student confidentiality, these agreements were discussed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Colonial School District and the Colonial Education Association regarding salary schedules. Article 4, Section A, Page 3 of the current collective bargaining agreement, CBA, as presented. This memorandum of understanding will begin on May 16th, 2025. May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Colonial School District and Colonial Education Association regarding teacher on special assignment.
May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the grievance settlement agreement with respect to CESP Grievance Number 23 between the Board of School Directors of the Colonial School District and the Colonial Education Support Professionals.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the Flexible Instruction Day Program for the 25 through 27 school years. This program was discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting on May 12th, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor?
But wait, there's more. This is a motion to approve the conferences outlined below. These conference requests were reviewed at the Curriculum Committee meeting on May 12th. Math Curriculum Supervisor Ed Merck to attend a conference on AI in math classrooms at Rowan University on May 19th, 2025. And Plymouth Whitmarsh High School College Guidance Counselor Beth Lynch to attend the National Association of College Admissions Counselors Conference in Columbus, Ohio from September 17th to September 20th, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the administration's request that authority to be granted to the district superintendent for the time period of May 15th, 2025, through the next regular scheduled board meeting in September 2025, to appoint qualified personnel to vacant positions contingent upon the board ratifying the employment of such personnel at the next regular scheduled public meeting.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now I will turn it over to the solicitor.
I have no report.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Chris, do you have a committee report?
No report for CROSA, Safety and Wellness.
Sharon, for curriculum.
The Curriculum Committee meeting on Monday evening, this past Monday, included a review of CMS's new proposed science resource selection, teacher professional learning opportunities, and conference shareouts, flexible instruction days, which we just discussed, and the Colonial School District West Chester University Prize Initiative, as well as the two conference requests, excuse me, conference request approvals. Highlights included the selection of Amplify Science to align with the new STEEL's science standards, impactful professional learning shared by our own teacher leaders, and updates on our gifted education process and procedures, as well as a review of the Colonial School District Flexible Instruction Days, FID days. And then Dr. Figaro Douglas also shared the growth of the prize program to support future educators. Just a reminder from the committee that we are promoting our upcoming Family Engagement Night on May 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Colonial Middle School, and then the two conference requests were also discussed. There was public comment focused on gifted programming and middle school transitions and just want to say thank you again to our families who came out to share their voices during that committee meeting.
All right, facilities. Mr. Winchester's not here. I just want to proactively thank Joe and his team. I know the next month, there is a lot going on on campus as the school year winds down, so just thank you to your staff ahead of time. And hopefully the rain stops and it's clear sailing for all the end-of-the-year festivities that we have planned. Rick, anything for finance?
Finance committee met on Monday, May 5th. Committee discussed tax collection services, CMTH budget voted on tonight, and the previously approved, proposed final 25-26 CSD budget. We also reviewed the 24-25 school year to date budget and food service meal prices for next year. The 24-25 budget revenues and expenses are consistent with expectations and on track to remain on budget. Some notes about food service that were highlighted that evening. The district will maintain prices for all standard meals for the 10th straight year. The only change will be the reclassifying of some of the customizable creation station meals at PWHS from $3.50 to $3.75 due to the rising cost of these specialized supplies. The cost for the standard meals will remain unchanged for 25-26, as well as the elementary meals. The Food Service Department is an independent unit that runs with its own balanced budget. One of the highlights of the meeting was how they keep prices so low in an era of rising food costs, and that was the example of how the district started sourcing its own meat and hand-forming its own hamburger patties, leading to a significant reduction in the amount of sodium in the burgers and leading to an innovative school lunch makeover award.
Congratulations. Gail, anything for HR?
Nothing additional other than the two policies that we voted on on a first-read basis.
Thank you. Chris?
No report for CMTHS.
All right, I know there's no intermediate unit report this evening. Sharon, anything for legislative?
Just a note that there is a lot going on in Harrisburg, obviously with the budget coming to pass soon, hopefully. And Ms. Plant and I have had the opportunity to attend several recent advocacy events on behalf of Colonial School District, the Legislative Breakfast, as well as the PSBA Day in Harrisburg. And some of the things that we are continuing to bring forward to our legislators are around cyber charter reform, mandate relief for our school districts, infrastructure support, closing the funding adequacy gap, supporting teacher pipelines, student-teacher stipends, and the structured literacy programs and curriculums that we hope to have in Pennsylvania. So just some of the topics that are top of mind in legislative today.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any community liaison reports this evening?
Whitmarsh Park and Rec had a very successful township day despite the mid-township day downpour. They extended their extreme gratitude to the district for allowing the use of victory fields and all of the assistance that Mr. Lally and his team provided. I'm sure everyone is aware that the 4th of July Facebook parade, or, uh, Facebook parade, 4th of July parade was canceled by the Board of Supervisors. I believe there is an additional hearing coming up on that in this building, but I apologize, I don't have the time and date, because that was not for the Parks and Rec. They only, what's that? May 22nd, so, thank, at 6:30. Thank you.
I'll just add for Conshohocken that the July 3rd fireworks are taking place. The Soapbox Derby is going to take place on July 4th and the Summer Concert Series. Information is on our website as well, so check that out for sure.
And for Plymouth Township, this coming Saturday, there is a town hall hosted by the Plymouth Township Police Department and then on, let me get the date wrong, the end of the month, the 30th, I believe, it's Plymouth Township Day as well, at the Greater Plymouth Community Center.
Great, thank you all. Gail, anything for the foundation?
Yes, we will hold our last meeting for the, for the school year on June 3rd and on that same day, we will recognize seniors who have won senior awards and their families with a reception.
Great, thank you. Also attached to this evening's agenda are school activity accounts, athletic activity accounts, a curriculum report, technology report, and building reports. And now we'll move into closing items. Is there any public comment this evening? Okay, is there any additional board comments this evening?
I just, I just want to say congratulations to our student representatives who are going to be leaving us. Natalie, Ronnie, just want to wish you well on your endeavors and thank you for your service to our community and to your peers. Thank you.
All right, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.